Okay, at 6:30, call the Pontebore reading to order today. A roll call, Eugene Thurston, John Kelly, Rebecca Hansen, Bill Bolton, Sharon and myself are here. And we'll move to the agenda. Do we have any public comments that are unrelated to the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to our first item. And before we do, Sharon and I have a point of order question. We do not need to accept it as complete. We've already done that, correct? We're just reviewing the modi-
This first one, no, but-
Correct?
Correct. But I would like everyone who is here to have signed in, please, for the record, at some point, our audience.
Okay. So everybody could sign in on the sheet by the front door there before you leave. Okay, so the modified site plan review for Soldier On. Is Mr. Lewis here?
Yes.
All right. So you want to give us the rundown?
Yep, I'm going to, for the record, my name is Jeff Lewis from North Point Engineering. Just going to pass out some revised plans here. Okay, I just wanted to point out, from Soldier On, with me here tonight, from Soldier On, is Rick Reed and Bruce Buckley, right here, who can assist me with any questions you may have regarding the operation or Soldier On. That's really more familiar with that than I am. But I was going to take a moment just to quickly refresh everyone's memory of where we've been. We were here just a couple of months ago, before you folks asking for an extension of the approval from last summer, which was this plan, right here. We were knowing that we were going to need to come back this summer for something, whether it was a compliance hearing or an amendment to the plan. At the time we were here, a couple of months ago, we were kind of right in the throes of figuring out what we were going to be doing. We had some conditions of the approval from last year we needed to address. And we're also working on possibly modifying the layout a bit, as we're heading into a funding application with New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority in August. And as it turns out, we have an architect, we're just getting an architect onboard the last time I was here, and we're looking at the ways to maybe minimize the impact to the site a little bit, to rein in the site costs, construction costs, which are coming a little bit higher than where we wanted them to be, as well as looking at some different orientation options for the buildings. And at the same time, Soldier On was realizing that they maybe had an opportunity to go after two more units. Our original plan was for 52 units, and they wanted to go in for 54 units, thinking that was going to be, allow them to be more competitive in the funding process here with NIFA. So, as a result, we've taken this plan that was approved and modified it into this layout here, which is a slightly different building design. It's currently being worked out and ironed out by the architect, and a slightly different configuration with the buildings and on the site. It's very similar in the footprint. It's a little bit more confined and slid a little bit to the south, which is uphill on the site, just to try to make better use of the existing topography that's out there. But other than that, it's very consistent with the previous plan. It's 54 units and not 52 units, and it's got a lot of the same amenities. Obviously, the drive entrance coming in is the same. One of the things that we identified a couple of months ago was that we really didn't need all the parking spaces that are required by the zoning ordinance, which is one space per unit. And for this use, and as Rick and Bruce can attest, they're really not going to have the need for that many parking spaces. So we proposed a plan that had 27 parking spaces, and had requested a variance from the zoning board last week to eliminate the other 27 altogether, thinking that 27 was going to be more than enough for this site. The zoning board had some heartache with that, so they denied that request. So instead, we've modified the plan from what we submitted last month, and this is slightly different than what you may have seen earlier this month, to add in 27 additional parking spaces. But we are proposing that they be grass parking spaces, so a constructed grass, which we have a protocol, grass pave, which will be a constructed, we have a detail in the plan for it, kind of like a honeycomb fixture with the grass, the lomax, you can go around on top of that. So they'll look like grass, and they'll infiltrate, so it won't be additional impervious area on the site. But there will be parking spaces there, which meets the requirement of the zoning ordinance, and it'll just look like kind of a lawn that'll probably never get used, but it will be overflow parking if it ever needs to be. So I think with that modification to the plan, we now meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. We think it's reasonable, and we have that before you tonight. So, there's really not a whole lot other that's new on here. We do have a list of conditions from last year. Several of them have been a-
Did you get copied from Mike?
Not today, I didn't know.
Well, you can have my copy. If I could just interject here, Jeff, folks, you have before you two letters from KV Partners. One is from last year, the other is from earlier this week, and there's a significant reduction in some of the outstanding issues, some which were just graphic, you know, clerical, if you will, on the plan, from our town engineer. And I'm going to paraphrase, I don't have it in front of me, but, oh, no, I do, I have an extra copy. Mike had sent me the most recent letter, which brings it down to five items of concern, and some are really innocuous, like add the stop sign visual to the plan or something. It says, Sharon, the redesign recently submitted for Soldier On resolved most of my, resolved most of my previous comments. This is a much more reasonable design for this site, in my opinion. See attached comment letter. So that's the word down from our town engineer regarding that specific site and the redesign, which sounds reasonably positive to me.
Yep, and it's the first time I'm seeing that, but those five comments I just scanned through quickly are, they're pretty much, the five of them from last-
Yeah. Copy that, because it's all, there you go.
And one of the conditions from the approval last year was to address the remaining comments from KV Partners, so we're tending to do that. I don't see any issue with any of these comments. So what we're hopefully looking for, after a discussion public hearing tonight, is a reapproval or an approval of this amended site plan with the same conditions, I think, as what we had before, unless you see fit for any others. The timing of this will be that if we get an approval tonight or in August from you folks, that will kind of clear the way for them to submit their application to NIFA in August. That's a critical step in that, we'll be having this plan approved through you folks by next month. And then, that award will come out this fall, so hopefully we get awarded the funds for this project, which will then allow it to move forward. And then, over the course of the winter, we'll be doing final building design, and probably coming back to you folks for another compliance hearing for just these few items, and gearing up for springtime construction, hopefully right around in March or April, and get this thing going next year. So that's the timeframe we're on. The critical path is getting everything as far along as we can for next month and August. So I'll stop there. Answer any questions, or have Rick or Bruce help me out.
Any questions from the board? Comments?
Actually, I've got a quick one. So you made a recommendation just to do like, maybe like a drive-by, take a look at it? Was there any-
Yes, yes, I think you should, just to get-
I did.
In your head.
And, you know, there's like a lot of like site work that's going to have to, you know, go on. Is that your intent for having us drive by, or?
Just to get oriented.
Yeah.
Spatially oriented to the feel of it versus the proximity to other things, and yeah. Yeah, there will be some site work, but I know Jeff can address that. Actually, this does require an alteration of terrain permit, which these folks did update as of July 2016. I couldn't find the paperwork easily, that doesn't mean I don't have it, but did you get the permit, and this is an amendment, or is it still in place?
Yeah, no, we have a permit from, well, we have a premise statement. We have a permit from last year, from the original plan, that's valid for five years, I believe. If the, but once this plan is finalized through you folks, our next step will be to submit those calculations for an amended permit through AOT. I don't see that to be any problem. We actually have less area that we're impacting with this plan, so it's really the same drainage design, so that should be pretty straightforward.
I was just going to say, I gave this comment to the ZBA also, that I'm about to say, and that decision was three to two, so it was, you know, there was some consternation there regarding a variance for reducing the parking. But I think it's important for the board to have the gentlemen who are here from Soldier On speak to those kinds of issues, because, yes, this is residential institutional, but it's a very unique development, very specific to the particular tendency that it has. And in that, you know, in my professional opinion, some concerns such as having a parking space for every homeless veteran, you know, paved, which was kind of the philosophy that was going around before, is not necessarily a requirement, because it's a totally different population. Yes, they should certainly be served to the level of anyone else, but, you know, we're talking about land use planning, we're not talking about, you know, philosophical stuff. So just please bear in mind that this is a very unique and very wonderful project, but it's not always by the book strictly, because our uses, you know, can have flexibility in them, as far as the implementation of how you guys proceed, so.
I'll just point, just to add to that, I just want to point out, you know, that the, one of the conditions of your approval last year was that, I'll read it right here, number three, parking shall be constructed with half of the spaces of a permeable material and half with regular asphalt. So instead of doing that, we just tried to get a variance to eliminate them altogether. That didn't work, so now we're just meeting that condition.
Right.
Sorry, I just went like, okay. And not to second guess the ZBA, you know, I think if you come up with that honeycomb thing, and you're satisfied with that, then that's pretty good.
I have a quick question regarding one of last year's conditions. There was work proposed in the conservation easement, is that still the case?
Yeah, there's, we actually, we have to cross the conservation easement with the driveway right here. Geez, I knew that would happen. I'll move this one away. I did meet with the Conservation Commission earlier this spring, I want to say it was in April. They were very receptive to this, and they were, you know, asked if there's anything they could do to help, or they would be interested in looking into building a trail down through that easement, if it would be helpful or something like that. So I basically told them that as we got closer to construction, we would coordinate with them again to make sure that, just primarily make sure that there's no impact to that easement, other than right here at the drive where we're crossing, we keep that to a minimum. But they didn't have any concerns-
We would definitely want them in on our, any of our pre-construction meetings with the various department heads and contractors and-
Yep.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board? At this time, we'd like to open the public hearing. That's 16 minutes of seven. Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this project? You can do so now. Please state your name and where you live.
Brian Miller, live in New Hampshire.
And I am speaking in favor of this project. I believe the amended design meets the criteria and the intent and purpose of our land use regulations. I believe the addition to this system of housing would be a benefit to the people of town of Plymouth. And I believe the amendments requested for change in number of units is appropriate. And I think the layout and location is going to be something nice to look at and possibly visit, and I would highly recommend approval.
Thank you, Brian. Would anyone else like to speak?
Excuse me, my name is Mike McGinley, I'm going to butter to this project on Boulder Point. It's most appropriate, great location for the services, and I would ask for your support.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Delmont, I'm the Director of the Rich House Shelter and Veterans Advocacy. And I had the opportunity the other day to review some numbers, and in the last three years, we've served 67 homeless veterans, and I have to say that no more than a quarter to a third had vehicles. That's just been my local experience. Thank you. And I think it's a great project.
Would anyone else like to speak of general nature or against the project? Seeing none, we're closing the hearing at 6:45. And we're back to the board. Any further questions or comments? I would entertain a motion, someone would like to craft one.
So the motion though would be just to accept the amended-
The amended site plan review, yep. With the conditions-
Or is just, we've already found a complete?
We've already found a complete, the previous, last year, so all we have to do is approve the changes.
And you may have further changes, but that's perfectly legitimate, that you may have to revisit, because it meets, you know, the tipping point of site plan review, so this is not anything untoward.
I move that we approve the amended application.
With the recommended-
The town planner, recommendations of the town planner and stipulations that are already attached to the application.
You have that, Sharon?
Mm-hmm.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Thank you very much, it's a great project.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck in August.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Mr. McGinley, you're up. Ah, you're not up!
Does that show the easement, the meets and bounds location?
Yes. Shows the easement with a new location, and then the maintenance easing around.
Yep, that's great.
Yep.
Thank you.
And they are in the package of the sign.
Yeah, they've got everything else, and if you had an extra or two of the files, I'd appreciate that. Of that, yes, please.
Thank you.
You do have a reference to this, folks, in your application, but this is an updated excerpt from the original plot plan by Kevin French, the surveyor of origin, and he had, they've slightly shifted the sign easement area, and they have added meets and bounds to it to show precisely where it is located on the map, which the other excerpt didn't have, because it was from a couple of years ago. This is just an update.
Okay.
Oh. I see, just remembered the deal we had last time with the tape.
Yeah, well, see if I can mold it up there.
Well, I can help you if not, or whatever.
I think it's really fine, but he can see it on the copy.
So before we get started, Sharon, just to kind of clarify this, they've already received a variance from the zoning board of appeals in the terms of-
Yes.
Is that correct?
The area and the height.
The area and the height.
Yep.
Okay, so as far as that's concerned, that's a done deal.
That's a done deal. Now, the protocol would be with master signs, and I know that you folks, as this particular group, haven't dealt with a master sign. You would have had the authority to provide that kind of variance, if you will, from the normal-
With the original approval.
Yeah, with the original approval, but it's a crapshoot for the applicant at that point, so they went ahead and did go to the ZBA, so that is locked in place, and you do have to abide by it.
Okay, so as far as the public hearing is concerned, this will be an informational public hearing?
Well, yes, I mean, you have to decide and give approval, less if you will, the sign itself, the master sign itself. But with those dimensions in hand, you can't quibble about making it higher or lower. Oh, you can make, no, you can't make it higher, never mind, don't even go there. Please don't go there. Don't go there.
Okay, I guess that gives us, that gives us the background. And you are?
I'm Carol Stackpole, I'm here for Riverside Landing, the developer of the project. I'm with the law offices of Frank, Michelle, and Meredith. And we're here based on getting a site plan review for the location of, so that we're going to end up having two signs on this particular lot. The application is to convert the existing Bank of New Hampshire sign to a master sign, and simultaneously with that, the owner of the lot is going to, and we've submitted an application for a permit to have another Bank of New Hampshire sign. So in your packet, we've got the supplemental sign, we refer to it at, as in, this is the location we've indicated off to the side. And the existing Bank of New Hampshire sign is going to be converted using the support structures and converted into a master sign. And that's the design that you have there that we took to the zoning board to get the approval on the height and the design and the area of the sign. The application is based on the freestanding sign section of the zoning regulations, which allow for you to approve a separate master sign, which, as Sharon said, we would normally do that as part of the whole project, but since at the time, the original development of the first two lots, we reserved the easement, there was really no need at that point for a master sign, and we hadn't, you know, anticipated what was going to happen at that point. When we were before the zoning board, we pointed out to them that what's happening here, and I think with your packet, I submitted a copy of the larger site plan, maybe a smaller version.
Excerpt from that, yeah.
Yeah, so that you could see that there is a hotel now back here, the liquor store on previous applications, the road heading west, and there's more land out to the west of it that we're proposing this master sign would serve for that project. So this is the sign, and on there, we've proposed, you know, essentially some spaces for a couple of, what I want to say, major tenants or businesses, and then some smaller ones for some, you know, smaller businesses. I believe is your Exhibit B, and it, yes. What we've shown you in the Exhibit B in your, is what the existing Bank of New Hampshire sign looks like, and we are going to be taking the supporting structures and converting it in the same location with the same foundation into this-
I'm not sure if they have that-
I think you have a different Exhibit B than we do.
I mean, it's certainly important, but it wasn't overly germane to this, but you're welcome to show them. I just, I had to cull some of this stuff.
Oh, okay, I thought I submitted, but, well, I don't know what you pulled.
So our Exhibit B is this.
Yeah, that's the master sign, it's not what's existing there now, which I think we're fairly, I may, I may be able to find a copy, Carol, here, or I could make copies of that. But I, well.
Yeah, well-
Oh, I'm sorry, did you say what the new one was going to be? The new freestanding sign?
Did I say what?
Were you just referring to the new freestanding sign?
No, 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 the master sign. I thought I had put as Exhibit B to the application, a copy, just to show them that this is the size of the existing-
We had a different Exhibit B, that only shows the master sign. Sorry, that's what I got.
That's where you got confused? Okay.
But I, I'm happy to make a copy real fast, if you want.
I think I have more than one copy, but, yeah. That was just to show that we-
The previous, the previous and the proposed, oops, sorry.
Right. So what we've done as part of that, and I gave copies in the application of what we're running off of an amended declaration of covenants and restrictions, Section 5 of that has reference to the relocation of the master easement sign area, because we had originally reserved an area down below. They gave us the option with this landowner to utilize the existing Bank of New Hampshire sign, and with that, they have approved for us to move the same easement area just around the Bank of New Hampshire sign. So that's what you see in that location there, is we have taken the existing easement, which we've gotten the new meets and bounds for, and wrapped it around the proposed renovation, if you will, of the existing Bank of New Hampshire sign, based on the area design and the height that you see in the sign that we obtained the variances for. So I think that's pretty much what our application is. Under the section of the zoning ordinance that allows you to review that as a separate sign within our easement area, in addition to the owner having his own sign, it says that you have the leeway to be able to do that, if it meets the intent and purposes of your zoning ordinance, and generally, if it, you know, would be of a benefit. And some of the purposes in your ornament, in your ordinance, refer to such things as promoting the safety, excuse me.
I've got it. Yeah, I had tabbed it out here, but- A lot of paper.
Yeah, the purpose is to regulate the erection of signs for the purpose of providing information, advertising in an orderly, effective, aesthetic, and safe manner. When we were before the zoning board, we proposed to them that the design itself is intended to be very simplified and orderly, providing for the general location. We elevated the eyesight level of the sign design to keep, take it up off the ground a little bit for safety purposes when you come to the intersection, when there might be snow in the wintertime, they'll be able to see those bottom portions of the sign, whereas before, the design of the Bank of New Hampshire sign, as you can see, if we were to match the height and everything, it would be way to the ground. So the consideration for that sign was to be able to get people to this project, especially to the back part, as businesses develop back there, they'll know where to find them. If they just have an address of Riverside Landing and don't see anything else, you know, they're going to be looking all over the place. So this is designed to give them ease to get to those businesses. It's also designed so that you're obviously going to eliminate the number of signs that you have on Tenny Mountain Highway, because we're going to have more businesses located behind the front of the Bank of New Hampshire and McDonald's. And the location is such that it's, you know, right there where there's the traffic light, and people will be able to read the sign visibly easily for those businesses that are out back. So we believe that, you know, this sign will benefit the project, it'll benefit the people traveling to the area, and it will greatly benefit the businesses in terms of getting people to this project and to their businesses, because, you know, that's a minimal adjustment for them and advertising for them to get people to easily and safely find their businesses. So with that, we're requesting that the board consider that readjustment. I will add one other thing, is that the sign does also go along with one of the purposes of your- of your, of your planning ordinance in that you'd like to promote the reuse of buildings and structures. And this is one of the things that we're doing with this sign is not moving and putting up a whole new brand, new sign somewhere. We're taking an existing structure which will be minimally invasive to, you know, redesigning the area and just reconstructing a new sign.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from the board on the completeness of the application? Do I have a motion to accept the application as complete?
It's moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, if there are no objections, we've accepted the application as complete. Questions, I guess I can start with a question. Maybe Sharon, you might be able to help out on this. So we've got one master sign.
Mm-hmm.
That's going to.
For the entire plaza.
For the entire.
Plaza.
Project.
If you look at your schematic, you'll see that, I mean.
So here's my question.
Yeah, okay.
So.
There's room for more.
So there's room for more, but what if, let's say, a large vendor such as Market Basket decides to go down the street there behind the liquor store?
Mm-hmm.
Are they going to want to have their own giant sign as well? So my question is, can there be a proliferation of signs or is this it?
No, no. This is the whole intent and purpose. I just had it, now I've lost it. But I did give you folks an excerpt from the zoning, and it speaks precisely to the rationale for this. Everyone gets a, there are all different types of signs, obviously, you know, wall-mounted signs, this and that.
Right.
The freestanding sign is what's commonly referred to as the sign that's on pylons, you know, the sign. So everyone will get one of those, but.
Need a sign on the building.
It's going to have to fit. It's going to have to fit. The master sign is, the reason it gets the exception from the zoning ordinance, either from you folks or through the ZBA and then blessed, if you will, by you folks, is that it's a tool to avoid proliferation and it also creates safe signage, because you are, you're on a busy highway there, you don't want people, you know, rubbernecking and stuff, looking for stuff and rear-ending someone. You also, if you have, you know, interior circulation there, people will know that the whatever is somewhere here and hopefully can see it. And then you have pedestrian circulation on foot traffic looking around for stuff.
So generally speaking, the answer is no, this is the sign for the rest of the development.
It's the master sign. Yeah, you're not going to see anything, well, first of all, this, this is wider, so it has more display area and taller than your norm according to the zoning specifics, but it is the master sign. That's the whole premise.
Okay, so now this brings me to the second part of my question. The Bank of New Hampshire is going to put their own sign up, is that correct? This is not your project, I understand that, but.
Well, the whole, I should say the, that our agreement with that landowner, okay, is that we will put a master sign in that easement area so long as simultaneously with we're able to get an approval for their Bank of New Hampshire sign. That's also been submitted, a permit application has been submitted, the design's already been submitted. So what we need approval on is not just the master sign, but being able to have a master sign in the easement area that the developer holds on that and thereby allowing the owner to have their own freestanding sign. This being the exception to have the master sign, as you would be able to approve the, the exception to the one freestanding per lot, we're now going to have a separate freestanding because it's falling under the request for the exemption based on a master sign.
If I could jump in, the caveat that is the master sign, the relief, if you will, it says, "The master sign plan," which is what you're looking at, "can exempt the applicant from existing freestanding sign requirements," and that would be that you are only allowed one sign. So everybody gets their own regular sign on a smaller scale, and then the master sign collaboratively does it. Nobody's losing anything.
And now I'm confused.
Well.
What do you want for that, John?
Well, when you, when you normally go before to get a whole development, you would be able to, as part of the design or application to the project, put a master sign.
Right.
In there.
Everyone's getting a freestanding sign twice. Once as a panel on the master sign and once on their own lot or location wherever it may be, but not the same scale, of course. We're just talking about a type of sign, which this is a freestanding sign, something that's on pylons.
Bill?
So I don't know how exactly we got to this point. I know there was a disagreement, but I, I really thought that that was going to be the master plan, you know, for, I mean, for the mass, the, the sign itself, it was going to be right there. And then I guess the current landowner decided to put their sign there.
Yes.
And then it resulted in this agreement, which is kind of unfortunate.
It was actually going to be located a little, you know, further into the corner, but that they put it, and where they put it interfered with our easement area and, you know, you couldn't have two signs right there.
Right. So it's a shame. And also too, I mean, everyone's got their sign on the buildings. I mean, I know where the Bank of New Hampshire is because I see it on the building, and also Marriott, I can see their sign as well.
But that's what our zoning says, you can have this, this, and this by right. So no one is getting away with anything extra, except the master.
Now we're allowing an additional freestanding sign for each property within there.
Because, yeah, because of the density. It's about density of, of businesses and stuff. You just, you know, you need something comprehensive, which is what this master sign is.
Okay, I'm still confused.
That's okay.
Let me explain why I'm confused.
Okay.
So the purpose of the master sign is to reduce the congestion and proliferation of the signs, right? However, we, I've just heard that we're going to allow the master sign plus the sign of the building plus an additional freestanding sign on each individual owner's lot. Is that correct?
But, yeah, but, but the thing is that, I just lost my train of thought here because I was thinking something else.
You have to do.
But if everyone were allowed to have a huge, if everyone were allowed to go to the zoning board, every single tenant in there for a freestanding master sign, and so you'd have one, let's say theoretically, that was, the max is 16 feet, one that's 20 feet tall and, and this wide, and one is here and one is there and one is everywhere, you're, you're not going to get, I mean, freestanding signs, no one is going to spend the extra money.
I just want to know what the ordinance says.
I just read it to you. It's on page, oh, you probably don't have, and you have a copy. It's right there, it was in your package.
That's a good question.
I think the master sign really is intended to replace the fact that not every lot is going to have road frontage where their sign will be able to be seen by people driving on Tenny Mountain Highway to find them.
There's also that aspect of it, you're absolutely.
Yes.
Isn't that exactly what the master sign, up with the tractor supply is? They had one master sign on the road and then it could go into the particular building. Now they've got, you know, tractor supply across the top. My question is, and I'd like to. Do you think that they need all of these signs?
Yes.
The, the, other than maybe on the, on the road directing them where it's supposed to go?
Signage is very important to any commercial user, and I think this plan is meeting the situation that we were put in a couple of years ago. It's a compromise, it's good for the project, it is proper under your zoning ordinance to do it. I recognize that the second sign is a little bit of a red herring here, but under that master sign and the fact that it falls into an easement area that I already own.
Right.
Then it would appear as though the bank would be able to have their own separate sign on their own lot.
You know, that's going to confuse people.
I don't think so.
The easement, the easement area is almost like a separate lot of record.
That's correct, it is, yeah.
So you're giving a sign approval to an easement holder to have on their area of land, and you're giving a sign to the remaining landowner to have a sign, which meets the ordinance.
How many of these signs, the smaller signs?
The smaller sign is a, did we submit that with that?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a, it's, um.
It's what's called a pedestal or pediment sign. It's low to the ground.
It's forty square feet of estate. It's very attractively done with some beautiful culture stone underneath.
It's about ten, 10 feet high by 10, is that what it was?
I think.
Um, when you add the cornice in, it's a little, there's a little cornice on the top, this is, um.
You should have that, that floor you have.
They had that, yes. Yeah, so it's a, it's a, it's a lower to the ground, just off the ground type sign.
So that's the sign for Bank of America and not this here, or is that?
This is, this is the existing Bank of New Hampshire sign that's already in this location right here.
Yeah.
That's their sign. This was designed to show you that this would be converted into this in that same location.
Right.
This sign will then be located, what you see on the supplemental sign area over here, low to the ground so that the master sign will, you know, won't impede that. It shouldn't impede anything in terms of visibility on the way.
I, I wouldn't get too overly, it's, it's a wonderful thing that they're doing a proactive reuse of part of the foundation and pylons of the Bank of New Hampshire sign, but don't, don't get caught up with that because that's kind of neither here nor there in terms of your decision. That's why I think it's, it's very confusing, so there's a lot of pieces to this.
If there are no objections, Frank, you do want to say something?
Yes, I think having.
Are you in public?
We're not in public area, I'm just, we're not in public area yet, but go ahead and tell us.
Of the master sign, the problem is when you're approaching this site from going the west or coming east, because of the vegetation, you have no idea where the buildings are located. You can't even see the Bank of New Hampshire building. One of the purposes and the intent why we came up with the master sign program is not unlike tractor supplies, master sign area, is that you can't even see the business. You wouldn't even know it's there. And there are lots right next to it for sale that were, once they're sold and occupied, they would put their sign, a name on that sign. This sign here, it says, "We're looking for aesthetically pleasing designs and, and size to the location of the types of buildings and so on, and within our structural limits that we've had." But the biggest thing is when you're driving westward and this master sign allows you a quick identification of the items located within that area that you can't even see yet, whether you're coming east or you're going west. And that is why we've came up with the master sign program, because we were trying to get away from everybody having a main sign along the road, even though you, they're up on, like, Boulder Drive, out of sight. And this is an attempt to have aesthetically pleasing, balanced master signs to have a quick read by the customers and the driving public, so they, they could get in the right lane for a turn, you know, put turn signals on and get in position to make a turn, to know even what's in that, that building area. And I think that's why we voted on coming up with this sign proposal to get away from having this pedestal sign that's 16, 20 feet high on each business all the way along, because you, we were trying to get away from some of the other towns that are doing that.
Do you remember when that was, it's not, of course, noted in the zoning ordinance, do you remember, just ballpark, Frank, when you had this voted in?
I'm thinking that was back in the, honestly, 1990, because we did the Main Street program, the whole signage element. We were trying to, you know, get away from the blinking, rotating neon light type of signage that other cities and towns had, and we were trying to keep our quaint New England character, if you will, have, you know, signs that were representative of the design criteria of our ordinance, so that we wouldn't have a sign that's 50 feet high like this hotel up here on Route 3, where you've got a master, huge sign that's way over the size of the building. And so this particular master sign is balanced, it's aesthetically pleasing by design, and it meets its purpose of making the motorist aware of what's in that area that he can't even see yet and know that he's going to make any right turn or a left turn. So I think that's what, what this whole exercise and purpose is, to get this.
Thank you, Frank.
I don't know if there's an answer for this yet, but just want to think about down the road, what's happening, what's going to be happening in this development. Is there a potential for a second entrance? Is that going to trigger another master sign? Is this the only, be the only one?
Well, I mean, that would, that would have to be discussed, but, you know, if it's part of the same development, this is the master sign. I mean, signage is signage, so.
My understanding, that other road was, at least originally, the purpose of it was for a delivery road more than the actual.
Kind of a back access if necessary, right.
And you don't need the sign.
Because it, because you don't want, I mean, we're all conjecturing here, but personally, professionally and personally, in my opinion, I don't think you would want an entrance, a busy entrance that wasn't signaled, and you can't signalize another entrance, there isn't enough room, so.
The only reason I bring it up is something that comes up a lot as we approve and discuss different things in this development, is just the fact that there, you know, it's impossible, or next to impossible, to really plan out the development and, because we just don't know what's going in there.
Maybe Mr. McGinley can speak to that, but you also, I mean, this is where you wanted to put some parameters in. So if there's, if the master sign is here now and there is room for at least one, well, okay, we're missing McDonald's and the, say, two more entities, it looks like, from this rendering.
So.
That's it. I think that's all you've got there available for space.
Another question, Sharon, on the free, on the normal, for the property owner to have a freestanding site for his business on his property, we have requirements, right?
Yes.
Maximum size and so on and so forth.
Yes, oh, yes, yes.
Now, is there anything that speaks to signs like that that are not on his property?
I, I'm sorry, didn't.
In other words, if Tractor Supply wanted to put a big sign down on Tenny Mountain Highway, let's say they bought a piece of land and decided to put a big sign down there, could, did they do that?
No, because they already have the master sign.
And just a separate piece of property with a sign?
Yeah. I'm just curious.
It would have to go before.
No.
Why am I asking?
Well, they have, maybe that's not a good example, because they have a master sign. I mean, you're using it because they have.
Pick any, any business, but I guess my question, it gets back to what Rebecca was saying, you know, if, if Market Basket does, if we hope, get in there, you know, they're going to want to have probably a sign bigger than that.
Well, look at your, look at your schematic. Look at the blank space at the top.
Yeah, but you're getting to the point that they're going to stick a sign there, regardless of, of the blank space on top, which is the, you know, keynote.
Yeah, but the.
The bank is having an extra sign.
No, they're not having an extra sign.
They're having their own sign on their property down at the corner there.
Which everyone else has too. McDonald's has now, if you look, and they all have it. You've got to look at what the zoning says.
Yeah, I'm just, we're just trying to understand what the.
Yeah, no, I'm not trying to be argumentative, because I know that a lot of you have never dealt with this before, and it, it doesn't happen a lot. But the bank is, okay, for example, the bank, yeah, you could say they have two signs on the same lot, which they are allowed because they are also a tenant on, on the master sign, but they've also got that master sign planked, it's in an easement, so it's not on their lot, but it looks like there is, so there's a, there's a trade-off there for them in particular.
Rebecca?
There's no other easements on the property, so unless Marriott wants to buy the additional lot and put a big old sign up there, I mean, that's kind of what you're talking about. I don't see that happening.
But, but see, yeah, any, any master sign would have to come, and there wouldn't be, but, but any sign of any import would have to go before you guys.
So does our zoning speak to off-site signs?
You worry about something that might happen. You worry about something that might happen, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, any additional master signs, if we were asked, or an expansion on this one as we go to have each approval done, those are all things you would have to look at again. So if we put a Market Basket.
Have to go to the ZBA for starters.
Right, exactly, exactly. So there, there wouldn't be an opport, there will be opportunities in the future, as the development happens, for you to look at what you've got now, and then what's proposed, and say no, or look for, you know, adjustments. Yes. You would have that opportunity.
And I'm sorry, I missed your.
Okay, I'm not trying to drag this out.
No, 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 it's important to understand.
Off of your exact, of your presentation, but, so what, so if someone came to us and said, "I want to put a sign directing people to my business," that sign is not going to be on my property, it's going to be on somebody else's property, or property that I lease, or property that I have an easement on. Can I do that?
Yes, if there's an easement, if they are granted an easement, because the underlying landowner is the one that has to have the easement. Now, in Mike's case, you can't, Mike McGinley's case, this is different, because originally he owned this property, he retained the easement.
Right, right, I'm not, I'm not, as I said, I'm not talking about that, I'm saying in general.
The theoretical stuff.
In general.
It's got to be theoretical, yeah.
In general, if someone came and said, "Look, I want to put a big sign," or a sign, some kind of sign, "directing people to my business," that is somewhere else, not on my property, they can do that. Is that correct?
I don't believe so.
It's kind of like a billboard, right?
Sounds like a board.
You better look up the regulations.
But it, yeah, it depends specifically what it is, and whose land, and is it allowable in the zone, the lands on every situat, the reason I'm not giving you a pat answer is because every type of sign, and there are several in here, and every location of sign in a particular zone has to meet the criteria, so there's no cookie cutter. But it's always looked at, because they always have to get a sign permit from Brian, which is the end of the process. And Brian always, you know, we always discuss it, and that's where the red, excuse me, the red flags would come up, when I would say, "Whoa, wait a minute, this is not happening," or "This needs to go."
If we look at the, the regulations that, in the town, put them up on signs and so on.
There's a huge chapter on signs.
That the previous planning board with Walmart and Lowe's that never came in, they chewed that up so much, it was unbelievable. I don't think anybody could, could not realize that there is a very limited amount of signage going on that road. And that we should go back to, you know, to the planning board's regulations on signs and come up and take a look at that, and I think we're going to answer a lot of these questions.
Just, just one more thing, and I'm certainly not going to try to confuse this any more than it is, but how a master sign, as Carol said, preempted proliferation of signage, is that it allows the backlot people that don't have road signage to have equal visibility for the frontlot people, all within a constraint thing. It's not like, remember in the old days, the, like, on the interstate, the, the gas station signs? I mean, they're 12,000 feet high, and then you could tell the one that came in 10 years later, it's, it's, you know, 25 feet higher, and it was all this business.
That's all taking care of.
Hmm?
That's all taking care of.
Yeah, no, but I mean, this is the rationale for this.
Yeah, it's, it's been taken care of.
To prevent something like that.
I don't want to chew it up anymore.
I just can say, it also gives a, it shows where the business is at the point of entrance, which I think makes it very clear.
Well, these guys don't have a lot of familiarity with it, John. I know you do, so you, so you do understand, but this is their, their first go around with this, and it does seem like it's a proliferation of signs, but it's actually one that's taking the hit for a lot of other proliferation. And if you look at the zoning, you can have several types of signs all at once on your lot. So this isn't really adding anything to it, it's just taking away the forest of really, really tall signs. And the last guy in, if he wanted a really tall sign, let's say theoretically, if there wasn't a master sign, he might get turned down at the ZBA because he's at the, the end of the train. So that's not really there either.
I think, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
A good example for practical sense, if you drive to the, the development and you see the liquor store on the sign, you know it's in that development, you get in the development, if you don't have a sign on that lot, you don't know which building is the liquor store. So you really do have to have a sign on the lots within the development, so people who get in there are going to be.
It's a recognition, it's a visual logo recognition also.
Exactly.
One thing I would like about, to say about the sign, I would really like to have a good-sized sign put up on a piece of property that, when a building starts going up, because that would eliminate the planning board and the zoning board about a million and a half questions, because everybody I see said, "What's going on there?"
Come on, tell us about it here at Town Hall.
And if they have a big sign, "Liquor store" there, they've got up about it.
No, tell me about it. Because I get referred all those calls, so, yeah. Well, hopefully some, a lot of companies do, which is nice.
Any other comments or questions, that we're just going to open the public hearing at 25 after 7:00. If anyone would like to speak to this project for or against, please do so now.
I'm Phil, I'm a citizen, and I wholeheartedly support and recommend approval for this here. Fine, well-attended-to, master sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank, anyone else like to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. One minute later, 7:26. Back to the board. Any other questions or comments?
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve this project?
I shall move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Sorry, I just had.
No, that's okay. Just want to make sure everybody understood, because I know.
Now, can you pass that sign ordinance down, so I can look at it, please?
There you go.
All right, we've got a couple more things here. We have some draft minutes, somewhere very deep in the pile. Anyone know where they are? I thought we got some draft minutes.
Yeah, we did, I thought.
Oh, here we go. June 16th. This was the extension for Soldier On. Thank you, Sharon.
Sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay.
Do you have any comments or suggestions for these minutes? Seeing none, oh, if there are no objections, we're going to approve the minutes. And moving on to new business, any new business?
Uh, no, except Tara will be coming, we presume, on the workday on the 4th, August 4th, Thursday the 4th.
Thursday the 4th.
To talk about the survey in detail with a PowerPoint presentation, so that'll be good to finally get to that.
Does that, that survey give any, I mean, not the survey, but does it give any indication as to maybe what the occupation is, or who the people are that actually, actually answered that survey?
I don't think we had a category for that, no.
Not occupation. Just age.
Age, yeah. You can extrapolate a little from age, but.
It would be, it would be interesting to see, you know, the size of occupation by probably.
There might be, there might be some in the notes, but it wouldn't apply to everybody. I mean, some people will say, "I was, I am a blah blah blah," and then, you know.
Just, just remember that next time we do this.
Yeah.
I won't be around, Charlie. Be pushing up babies.
You know, one thing I was thinking about this master plan process, is that when we get down to the writing, the implementation of what we're putting in this master plan, would it make any sense to look at things we're going to accomplish on a scheduled basis? In other words, maybe we try to do this in the first year, and this in the second year, and this in the third year.
We definitely prioritize it, because I think they, I think.
And also just say, when, when is it we want to tackle these things? And maybe that.
That'll give you a framework for.
I think it'd be very important, because last time they came up with granular ideas, and then you threw it in the back closet and forgot about it. So if you get on a yearly basis or something, it might help out.
That "they" is "us," though.
Yeah, or, or.
Well, it was them, yeah.
But it's us now.
Right, now it's you, so, yeah.
But you have other entities that would be tasked with, you know, the different things, give a time limit, and someone to follow up and make sure that it's done, so.
Yeah, so that would make it so, you know.
Achievable goals, that are steps.
Achievable, and that it could appear on, and then we could work it into the planning board's agenda?
Yes.
So that it's like.
No, that would be great.
Like a tickle file, you know, that this week we should talk about this.
Yeah, because we do need to.
Anyway, just some thoughts on that. Any other comments from the public before we say goodnight?
I don't have any more comments.
Any other new business? Do I have a motion? Oh, wait, wait.
So as far as like revisiting those definitions.
Yeah, well, I was going to.
Okay, well, go ahead.
No, go ahead, no, 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 that's, that's on our agenda already. I mean, that's a tickle thing, you're right. Go ahead.
It's tickled. I guess we're going to tickle it next, I just, you know, wanted to find out where we're going to be going with that, and.
That, and we also.
What?
The definitions, we were going to go through the definitions in the zoning book. I remember I had duplicated some of the definitions for you guys to look at, just to see what was missing, see where the language was obsolete, see where the definition itself, because the category, was obsolete, and just refine that to begin.
Why are we doing that instead of the zoning board?
Oh, they don't touch that. No, zoning board doesn't do anything. I mean, they, they don't, they, they, no. Rephrase it. Rephrase it. Sorry, Patrice. No, they adjudicate. No, they, statutorily, they don't touch that. You write the zoning ordinance, the planning board writes the zoning.
And then the town approves it. Okay.
Is that going to be in the minutes?
It's recorded. That's why I just offered that disclaimer.
So why don't we try to get everybody to do some homework for August 4th?
That would be good, if, because that was kind of floating out there.
Pick your, your three most hated definitions.
Or the one that, yeah, the one that makes your blood boil when you have to use it.
You really hate.
And we do have that standard, well, that, you know, theoretically standard definition.
Yep, and I have that book of Steve's.
Unless that Steve Whitman, oh, we haven't got the file.
Right.
Oh, that's right.
You PDF'd that, right?
No, I grabbed the PDF from, you know, Steve's CD that he had, which, and then sent it to everybody, I thought.
Right.
Yeah, I think he did.
I think so, yeah.
Where do we find all this information?
Where do you get it all?
Yeah.
It's in a PDF that was sent to the planning board.
It, it went out on email, John. Do you remember the date?
I'll send it out again.
Yeah, well, maybe, yeah. Would you mind?
Remember how old I am?
Yeah, I'll send it out, I'll send it out to, I'll send it to you. You might have not even been on the board of that.
No, yeah, he was.
It wasn't that long ago.
Was this spring, late spring, maybe? I don't recall. But if you, if you think of it, Bill, if you wouldn't mind, if you.
So anyway, pick three.
Say it again.
Can I pick that information up from?
I'm going to pick tree. Tree is a good one.
Town, the Town Hall?
Tree.
If I don't.
It's, it's, it's.
No, tree is actually a definition in.
I mean, you could certainly come and look at it while you're here.
I'm serious.
The thing is.
This is a little Abbott and Costello thing.
Some of the definitions that we have are in the book, but the book's this thick. You could certainly come and look at it, or you can ask Steve.
You don't have the list that we're supposed to be looking at?
No, that's in your zoning.